But if it does, it's a whole group.
Correct. And it's something that is general to regional center consumers overall.
For that group that they're...
A lot of them.
Okay, okay. So let's say, let's say we're going to give everybody who lives in a group home 50 bucks. Just hypothetically, okay?
I would say they have increased potential because it's being on the same.
Okay.
And it should be disclosed.
Because a lot of them have children.
But don't live in groups.
Right.
Because we still live in families.
Right, okay.
But it should be disclosed, so they're aware of it, and it's necessary for that person to know. But that does give the benefits to them as opposed to...
So if I have a child who has a conflict, I have a potential conflict with him, or not?
No. Just because you have somebody who receives regional center does not create a conflict.
Does create a potential one.
So, no, nothing specific that you can point to that's creating that potential conflict, the code specifically. That's consumers who receive benefits. That doesn't itself have to be disclosed as a...
I'm not a fine old retired lawyer who has the potential to receive some help candidates from the region.
All right, how are you doing? What's your video going? You!
So, I looked on the internet, I saw like a group home example, so pretty fast, I think it's a fairytale thing.
Oh, you did, huh?
Oh, my God.
You're famous.
For a benefit of beauty, you vote for a lot of issues. Correct. Well, we just can't, you know, we can't participate, it's just a court, it's a discussion.
No kidding, none of the things.
All right, I'm a parent. Does that mean I have a potential conflict this time?
So just ask yourself, make sure that... And that member invited to work now, serve for the service of the board, cannot vote on any fiscal matter affecting the purchase of services for the regional center advisor. Ms. Carroll? Cannot vote on any issues in which that member has a financial interest. So, you have to use good methods. That person will be more limited on what they can vote on in this discussion because they already have them, and so many issues could potentially make progress. That's why you have the limitations of filling out the code on what can be verified to a member who has an active liability. So, those individuals, they can't work, depending on some specific vendor issue that is back in it, and that person can't speak up. And on your financials looker, which are these conferences, that you have the financials by the office, if you're knowingly, you're aware that you're starting to help them, you could take subject... If I have to, then I'll talk. So, after hair on his eyes, he's on this. Those have been, well, potential penalties. So, any questions?
I have a question. It might be a different age. I checked.
And now this year, I'm not going to...
I have a potential financial interest based upon circumstances. That wasn't it. I checked the box that said, I have a potential financial interest because I was going to be a transportation person for my son, and then when we go to the center, he was going to pay me for my gas. They mixed that out. It never happened.
You said they mixed that out? You just got paid?
No, I mean, I was told they were not doing that to me. Okay? So...
My...
No, I didn't because I wasn't going to because I'm sorry.
Your sharing all the personal information is right.
I can't resist.
Please try and finish those this evening because we have to have them interstate the department on August 1st. So I'll be counting you if you like to approach us or stand around.
Our legal counsel told me I didn't have a copy.
He has one.
Thanks, Steve. Before Dr. Cutler decides to call for me to order, we would like to recognize him for his leap into marriage. We're very excited for you, and this is just a congratulatory note from all of us.
Thank you.
Glad you're here.
I apologize, however, for being late for the service awards. It was fully my intention to be here by 6:00, but covering two hospitals and trying to take care of other things as well. Welcome. We're happy to have you attend us this evening and hope that you can join with us in sharing some information as we try to move things forward here at the Regional Center. As everyone here is aware, there have been a lot of things going on, and that continues to be the case. And as always, there's interesting news coming out of Sacramento, and so let's move directly into our agenda. First of all, everyone here on board has a chance to review the minutes from our last meeting, discussion, changes, revisions.
There was a typo under public input number 2 for the N., because the siren call is identified. Aside Greek enrollment, it says pathology, it should be deontology.
Small one. What an important typo. Thank you. It changes the meaning.
More than what I can apologize.
Anything else? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to accept of that change.
I'll move.
All right, those in favor? Hi. And opposed to that? Very good, thank you. All right, our public input for this evening, we have three who have given me slips, and the topics, I guess, that were to be addressed don't speak anything specifically on our agenda this evening, so we will just take them in the order that I've received them. So first of all, we would invite Barry Sullivan. No?
I'm going to go last, actually.
You want to go last?
Yes.
Will do. Mo Mendoza?
Do you go to the...
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, up to the...
My name is Mo Mendoza. I'm a parent, I'm an advocate, and I have a little bit of concerns. The first one is regarding your agenda. I'm quite unsure because I've asked some people here if I had a complete agenda or not, and people that should have a copy of the complete agenda weren't even sure if I had a complete copy of the agenda. And I'm wondering why a complete agenda is never put on the website to where consumers or their parents can download it so we know exactly what you're seeing, so there's transparency. So what I'm asking of you guys is to have regional center put their agenda with all the agenda attachments on the website so we know exactly what you're seeing, and so we have the opportunity to really speak on an agenda item. Because I really can't, because some things that I thought were an agenda item, I couldn't match it to the agenda, so therefore I was told it's really not an agenda item, but yet they give it to you guys to look at, which I'm kind of confused. So just to let you know, there's a lot of confusion, and I'm sure why, especially when you guys want transparency. To me, that does not show transparency. And one of the things that I got that I thought was an agenda item was something that was done regarding the SB 946 insurance guidelines. There's a statement in this piece of paper that I have that says that if a person is on Medi-Cal, Healthy Family, and IEHP, that they don't have to seek a denial letter or anything automatically. Regional Center will keep the ABA services going. From my understanding, that there was an override on the bill regarding that, which meant that anybody that did have Medi-Cal but with IHEP, they had to provide the ABA services. So I'm confused, because I just went to training regarding this about two weeks ago, and it conflicts with something that I just got now from you guys. So if we could get some more clarification on how that goes, and if it could be posted on your guys' website, so we're more informed, because that falls under my son. I need to know, is he going to get ABA services, or do I have to seek out a denial letter? Are they going to give him ABA services? I honestly don't know at this time, because I'm getting conflicting information. Then my other thing is, is when I met with my caseworker, my son's caseworker and the ABA provider, I was told by accident by the ABA provider that I no longer can have progress reports. And I, as a parent, said, no, I get progress reports. I've always gotten them. But apparently, it's in the regional center's management decision that parents are not allowed to get copies of progress reports that are done by the APA provider. At this time, I'm asking you guys to look into that and see if there's any truth to that, which there probably is, because unfortunately, there was one done on my son, and they think there was a second one. Then I never got a copy. The one that the ABA provider had, I took from her, so I would have a copy. And that one was from February, and I never saw it. And the progress report basically didn't even look like a picture of what my son does for goals and objectives. I don't even know where the information came from. It was misleading, and me as a parent, if my son's caseworker's looking at this, she's going to think my son's doing very good, when he in fact isn't. So I'm very concerned about that, because there's progress reports out there that I didn't know, that I didn't get an opportunity to ask why they wrote it the way that they did. Especially when I have conflicting information from the provider that comes in and writes on a separate piece of paper that I saved notes that justifies differently. So I was very concerned about that, and you guys should be also, because I'm also being told, and I don't know if there's any proof, so this is my next thing that I'm going to ask of you, that there's apparently a regional center person here that has determined that ABA cannot be given past two years. Once the child receives ABA for two years, that they are supposed to be transitioned out. And apparently, this lady's name is Oz. Never met her, okay, but, you know, in IPP, that I stands for individualized, okay? My son might not meet that two-year criteria, and actually, he doesn't, because he's had it for many years. So I'm concerned about that. And a way to figure out if that is truly happening is ask for data back from January of 2010 to now to see how many kids have been exited, and were they exited at that two-year mark? And I'd like to see that data, and I'm sure parents that get ABA for their kids would all also like to see that, because I heard other parents are hearing that also. So I'm very concerned about that, okay? Because my child is not in residential placement because he gets ABA services in school and at home. And because of that, my child remains at home. So I'm concerned about that, because he's trying to be transitioned out of a program that he needs to survive to stay in my house, which he has a right to. Okay? And I'm very offended by that if that kind of situation is occurring. So I would like you guys, as Board of Trustees, to look at that and to ask the director to get clarification on that, and then to get data to either back it up that it's unjustified or that it is justified, and then do a plan of correction regarding that. Okay? Because no consumer should go out without services just because there's a two-year mark. It doesn't make sense. Then my next concern is, is I advocate also, and I was advocating for a consumer, and this consumer was an immediate jeopardy to himself and to others. We took him down to the Loma Linda Behavioral Health Center, where they have a psychiatric ward, okay? And the reason why I told the mother to take him there is because DDS does a crisis intervention for persons with developmental disabilities. Each regional center has to be contracted with certain entities to prove that they can meet the needs of people that have a mental illness and a disability. And one of them is, and it's on here, because I pulled it up, it is the Loma Linda Behavioral Center, okay? When the child went there, okay, the mom called me frantically because Loma Linda did not want to deal with the child, okay? Because he had a developmental disability, and they did not know how to service him, okay? Because he had a developmental disability, okay? But yet, you guys are contracted with this agency as an emergency housing option, okay? Because this happened on a weekend, okay? Inland Regional Center's not open. So I did what I always do, told her what to do, you know, until we could get Inland Regional Center fully involved. And then, in return, they're trying to exit this child out, okay? This child was so bad that the sheriffs wouldn't even put this child in a car, okay? Because they were so afraid of him, and this child was only seven years old, okay? Because cognitively, he's not aware of what he's doing, okay? So I'm very concerned about that, and I would like you, as Board of Trustees, to have Regional Center Director look into this and get them more training so a parent doesn't have to go through this. It got to the point where I had to tell the parent, when I tell you to, because I had to go down there, if I tell you to leave, you are to leave. Because they basically told her if she left, that they were going to arrest her for child abandonment. I told her I would handle that, because this is where your child needs to stay. Because I was so stubborn for three hours, they actually took the child, okay? But then they harassed the mom for three days, for three days to come and get this child, okay? And finally, she did pick him up, because she was afraid that she was going to be arrested. Inland Regional Center didn't come in and help on Monday or anything, okay? And they took this child off of all his psychiatric meds. And I cannot tell you what kind of condition this child was in at that time. And this is somebody that you guys are, you guys list as an option for a parent, and I'm telling you right now, that option is not there, okay? And really, you guys need to look into it, because there is no place for children when they have psychiatric needs. They're always turned away. You guys really need to have a contract with somebody that's going to take these kids. So I would like you to please look into that, because that's a great concern. Thank you.
Kristi Burchett?
Yes, good evening. I echo what Ms. Mendoza had brought up about the full packet of agenda items. It was better this month. There was definitely some items there, but there was no notation as far as what things were, go where. There's no financial report in what was given, at least what was submitted via email. Committee reports, there was, there was some different things, that there was not the actual full agenda, contents, packet, whatever you want to refer to it as, beyond the, you know, normal agenda first page. I wanted to again bring up the fact that requesting a parent advisory committee as a business action item, did that last month, wasn't on the agenda this month, asking once again that the board, you know, put it as a future agenda item, the parent advisory committee, especially with this issue of the new autism insurance bill that Ms. Mendoza also brought up. There's a lot of confusion out there, and each regional center is responding differently to ABA services as far as with insurance. Lot of things changing at the last second. Now Healthy Families is included as part of the services that are going to go under this bill. As far as co-pays and deductibles and all of that, there's a lot of confusion out there with parents, and there's no clear guidelines. Even the very last page of what was sent to me for this packet for today, there's no, it's kind of like a case-by-case basis. There's no clear guideline, basically. And I think that having a parent advisory committee would actually help with that issue quite a bit. So I wanted to bring that to your attention again. And then just, you know, my monthly reminder that I requested to be on the board, to be interviewed, haven't been contacted, also requested to be on the financial subcommittee that Mr. King was starting up, submitted the email as I was told to do, haven't heard anything. So I wanted to bring that to your attention once again. Thank you very much.
Gil Navarro?
My name is Gil Navarro. I'm a member of the Samuel County Board of Education, Area D. Along here representing myself as an individual, utilizing my public speech opportunity. And I wanted to also support Kristi's request last month for a parent advisory committee. It makes sense that this board, this agency, is serving the children of families, parents, grandmothers. And we need their input, just like we do with PTAs and advisory committees at the schools, and there's no difference. I don't think there's something to be afraid of, to be given advice by people in the community that have a vested interest in IRC. So I don't know why we wouldn't want to do that. Again, it's an advisory capacity. You're not mandated to follow their recommendations. They cannot give you mandates. But what's happening is if you don't have them included, there's that perception in the community, there may not be transparency. And you don't want that. You don't want distress in the community. So I strongly recommend that you consider that and implement it reasonably soon. Thank you very much.
Barry?
No, we'll keep it for next quarter. Thank you.
I'm ready. Dr. Cut?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
On our website, actually, it's Carol. I thought we had an emergency contact for our...
No.
Okay. And would it be possible to get something on the agenda for the parent advisory committee for next meeting?
Sure.
Something, you know, this is how many agencies have it. It's 21 of us, I guess. You know, maybe just a few bullets. At least we could talk about it a little bit, and then direct staff if we really want to follow up, or we're going to kill them.
We can put that on.
Yeah.
So we'll move into our executive committee report, and due to my absence, reasons that have already been brought before the public. Mary Beth, I believe, is going to read our executive committee report.
We discussed membership on the board. We've interviewed two candidates. We've decided to hold off on anything on the two candidates that we've so far reviewed or interviewed, because we feel that we need to do more recruitment. An ad is, has the ad been placed?
It's being placed, Stuart, by Friday.
Okay. An ad is being placed in the newspaper. Bits are needed, so that's why it's taking time for that, in a Spanish and an Asian language paper. And then...
Definitely have Spanish.
We did find the...
We'll look at that.
We're looking.
Yes.
Anyone has a paper in mind? It would help. Financial, 2011 to 2012 closing on the plus side, POS, will be in a deficit of $6 million. 2012 to 2013 contract came in, needs to be reviewed, signature, and approval with the board. Then we discussed committees for 2012 to 2013. The executive, which is officers in business, the first meeting for the business committee is July 12 at 3:30. Patrick, Kristen, Jack, and, oh, Christina, and contacts are being made with community folks, and we need two community members. And I, the nominating committee is Alma and myself, and we need one more. So we're still working on that, so that's why we haven't met. The auditing, there's an auditing committee, and it will combine the Master Trust Group with ICRC, and Carol, you will follow up?
Yes.
And then we have a training schedule. And we had our training tonight. You were all back there having fun and taking pictures. We had our first training. And the training schedule will be reviewed again and things added as we go along. The other items, and I believe this was an important one, and I know I'm going to murder this name, the Dimalia Alatory Bilingual Service Act, did I say it close enough?
Good.
Carol, you had a response to that report. Are you going to do that in your...
I'll do that in mine.
Okay, she'll, we discussed that. The frequency of board reports from directors and committees was discussed, and we agreed to do quarterly reports, and performance contract report will do every six months. We talked about a legal expense for Carol, and it was approved. Then we discussed the 40th celebration that we had tonight, and Patrick offered to cut the cake. We thought that was really nice.
There was cake left, I hear.
There was cake left. A very important part was responses to input, which is the public forum input. Carol will incorporate as much as appropriate in the monthly report to the board members, and we will have updates as appropriate. So in other words, when you come up and you request us to look into something, then Carol will be reporting to us as to what has transpired appropriately. You know, we're not going to go into like... You know, we're not going to go into like 30-minute dissertations if we don't have to. But we didn't write this down, but board members, we can request staff to look into something that, in particular, if someone got up and discussed something that they wanted us to look into, we can at that time request of staff to look into that item. And that's, that's very appropriate. Because we all just sit here and we don't respond. I know you never just, okay, I take, most of us just sit here and we don't respond. But we also, now, a lot of us are new, so we're not quite sure of, you know, the protocol. But we could, after someone speaks, ask that staff look into a certain item. And I know that's a little bit late from tonight because none of us really knew what was on that menu. To an item.
That's right.
It's only the two of us and I was pointing to you. Okay? We need to have the board reconvene after executive session and state any action taken and adjourned. And legislative contact efforts, the executive committee thought this would be helpful so that our elected officials are realizing that IRC is really trying to get things turned around. So that I'm not going to do the nominee report yet, or should I?
We'll, we'll come to it later. Did you have more? I wasn't sure if you had more to say when we get to that point.
Well, yes, I've got an email on that.
All right, well, we'll come back, we'll come back to you.
Let you know.
Short question, if I can.
Yes.
The legal budget for Carol? Is that what you said?
No, we were approving an expenditure for a legal expense for Carol, and it was approved.
What does that mean? Is that a budget that Carol has to...
It was an item and we reimbursed her for a legal expense.
Ah, okay.
It was approved.
Got you. All right.
Okay. One of the things that, you know, I've tried to, to keep you up to date on is the active, the total active caseload that we have. And at the end of the fiscal year, which was June 30, we had 26,537 active consumers that were receiving services from the center. And overall, for the year, we kind of bounced a little bit between three and three and a half percent growth with a budget that was blacked. All of the directors have been, I'm sorry, did you have a question? All of the directors have been very, very busy over the last couple of months. Coming to, to year end is always quite a task. Working with 26,000 people, there's certain reports that have to be turned in and certain things we have to do to close out the year. And so Gustavo and his team did a major effort to get everything closed and all of the contracts that would be going on were rolled over. And whatever needed to be corrected was corrected and all of that took place. Gustavo will go into more detail about closing the books and kind of how things are looking. Our new contract language did come in in May, and so later on in the agenda, you've identified that we do need to approve through signing that budget. There probably will be some addendums to that language because of the trailer bill. And the department went ahead and used the language from last year, so we could get the contract signed. And part of that also has to do with the releasing of the dollars for the center to be able to start the new fiscal year. And fortunately, the governor signed the budget on time this year, in fact, a few days ahead, so we were able to move forward with executing that contract alongside the department. And we do have, Gustavo's very glad that he has money in the bank, which is wonderful. Solon and his staff have been working really diligently also because there's usually service agreements that are involved at the end of the year and the ongoing negotiating rate contracts that are, that we're involved in, those happen at this time of the year as well. And so many of those have to be updated, revised in some, in some manner, some cases, not in all. And then it's getting the people in room to be able to sign those contracts and get them moving. In the, in the budget bill, as we go through the year, you'll see that there's quite a bit of language that talks about assisting people to stay in their home community. There's a huge, strong push to not have people in the state hospital. In fact, it will be, it will have to Congress if we have to place somebody in the state institution. And in many cases, they will not be allowed to go in. We would be required to find something and to do something in the local community to support them. Also, we have people that are currently out of state. We are very few, but we have some. And the goal is to have all of those people return to their home communities by June of 2013. So we have to plan a place to have those people return, find the alternative spots for them to be so that we can continue to meet their needs effectively. I think at the next meeting, going over some of that trailer bill language for the budget will be very helpful to you because there are some pretty unique things this year. And one of the things that was brought up this evening had to do with the copays for insurance as well as some of the issues related to the entities adding the ABA services to, to their, their plans. And that has been quite an undertaking that Levine and her staff have been doing. Margie and the transition team, again, have been working on people to get onto the Medicaid waiver. And what this does for California is bring in more additional federal money. And that is something that really helps with our part of the service system. And, and there are some changes in that trailer bill language that apply to the adults who have to do the supportive of the service. So we'll be working on that. We did submit our probation statement to the department that was required, and that was on time. We have not heard back as of yet in terms of any other questions that they have or any clarifications that they need on our schedule. I think some of the, most of the other things we talked a little bit about on the budget, but one, one of the things that was excellent was that, if you'll recall, about three years ago, I'm remembering this correctly, there was a cut that was put in place to providers of 1.25% if reduced on their rate of reimbursement. And then we had an additional 3% cut that was put in for them. And at that time, regional centers took that, that same reduction. And 3% of that totaling 4.25 reduction was restored. And so those dollars are in this year's budget. It applied to both us as well as the providers. So that was excellent news.
Are you saying that the net reduction total was 2.5%?
The net reduction is 1%.
What was originally, it was 1.4% and another 3%?
So it went to 4.25%.
Yeah, and now it's...
And now it's back to just 1, 1.25%.
Oh, I see, okay, good.
They restored the dollars for that 3%.
Okay.
And providers are...
What does that affect the company? That return of 3%, what does that affect it?
Pardon me?
So my understanding is the vendors will have an increase in bringing revenue back 3%?
It's not a re, an increase, it's, it's restoring...
Correct.
3% of what you were receiving.
When does that become effective?
Right.
When does that become effective?
July 1.
Next billing?
Your next billing and your payment that you would receive in August would restore that 3%.
So may I suggest that there'd be a really nice article on that in the weekly that goes out on... That'll give some real positive situation for a lot of events.
Thank you. Let me speak to the question that came up on the bill. No, I can't say it. The bill that has to do with Bilingual Service Act. In leading this, agencies that support people with, that are Hispanic. And in our, in our contract, it does talk about the fact that we need to have employees, we need to have written information available for families that are Hispanic, Hispanic and need that type of, of exchange in, so that they can read it, they can hear it, and have the ability to move forward as a family. There is nothing in the act that talks about reimbursing staff for that particular skill. We did some checking throughout the state and some agencies, not talking about regional centers, I'm just talking about organizations in general. Some agencies do recognize that and do have a stipend or some additional pay, but others do not. So it is something that we would, as a board, you all would need to consider that if that is something that we wanted to, to have happen. But it is not, it is not required. We do need to meet the needs of the people in the community. And that has to do, not just with Hispanic people, but with Asians, with Native Americans, we have staff that work alongside those people and there needs... If you'd like a copy of, of the piece of, of regulation, we can provide that to you. And there is some language in the Ladderman Act that also speaks to having appropriate information in the appropriate languages so that families can have their needs met, as well as consumers' needs. That's other word.
Thank you.
Dr. Cutt? Just on the ABA?
Maybe you're right, we're going to have something on the next agenda about that.
It sounds like you need to.
Right, okay.
We'll have to find out exactly what you want to know and then...
I know nothing, so it doesn't, you don't need much for me, I just...
So you need some basic education about the, the legislation and what it means to us?
Right, how it affects us.
Okay.
And what is being done to ensure that there are no disruptions in the daily provision of that sort of service?
If that somebody has an idea what it is. Well, I would like to know about the, the after-two-years exit portion. I'd like to have an answer on that.
And then on me, I might even try to announce it. That act.
I can't say it.
Right, I know, but I forgot.
I know.
That actually doesn't apply to us, does it? That piece of legislation at all? I mean, I understand the Ladderman Act and our contract, but that particular piece of legislation doesn't apply to nonprofits?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Help these out there, someone. Yes? There he is. I didn't wait. Financial report.
Hello, everyone. Again, I'm very pleased to be making this report tonight because it's actually very good news. At the last report, I mentioned the fact that we were running the possibility of having to activate the line of credit. And we were down to $2 million and we were thinking that we were only one week away from running out of cash. And actually, we had all our paperwork in front of the Union Bank and we, we came real close to activating. They had all the documentation. But we, last Thursday, we received paperwork from DDS. Actually, we got it earlier than that. Last Thursday, we got funding. And I called Carol, Carol, we got money. So we, this afternoon, we have $22 million in the bank. And Mary Lou, who runs our POS department, is happy because she was thinking, what am I going to do with the run that I had to run next week? So all that has been afforded. And the good news also is that we're saving about $100,000 that had been, well, about $60,000 that were on the budget to account for interest expense. So that, that savings, that's in the savings. It's called, using DDS terminology, it's called a preliminary allocation for the current fiscal year. And they gave us an allocation of, a preliminary allocation of $59 million. And they're, they're making the payments in increments of three, so we got our first $20 million, 19 and change, it runs up to 20 million. And then we expect to get $40 million monthly from the run. So from that perspective, we're, we afforded a little bit of a disruption or unnecessary expense on interest expense. And so those are the good news. As Carol said, we are going through an extensive process that is new to me, but I have a great team in finance and some members of finance are here, includes Marissa Stor, Mary Lupares, Van Trong, and Denise Adame. And we have all the members of the finance department that, they all have a part to do with what we call the rollover and rollback. And it's quite an extensive process that lasted for about, I think, about a couple of weeks because we started earlier. Oh, and Shirley Martin. She's, yeah, she also participated, contributed on that. Ken Willett participated on that. And Debbie Mannan. So everybody, I just wanted to recognize them because they, they worked very hard. Debbie Mannan had to come in on the 4th of July and one of her staff members also had to come in and put in some last-minute entries in the books. And everybody else worked late hours and it all happened and it went flawlessly. Actually, a couple of the, one regional center in Sacramento, they sent us an email and they wanted to know how, what, what we were doing, that was going so smoothly and so quick. And again, it's part of the team. They know what they're doing. They're excellent and I'm very proud to be associated with them. And I would like for them to stand up, please. Thank you very much. So those are the good news. It was a very brief report. I don't have a financial or the budget report because we're still in the process of doing it. We expect to have it completed for the June 30th, probably middle of next week. And then I need to review it very extensively to make sure that we've really come up with the surplus that we have in mind. We have made arrangements to use it up, but we don't want to take that step until we have the final numbers. The only sidebar that I have is we got notification today from DDS of, of upcoming audit for September, our yearly audit, DDS, and that they're, they are going to, actually, it will start on the week of September, the 17th. And they will be sending us a listing of documentation that they require for their audit. It's going to be four or five auditors. And they are going to have an entrance conference. And I would like to invite Patrick and all the members of the business committee and of the board of trustees, they would like to participate on that entrance conference. To be there, I think would be very nice to have you, have the business committee represented at that row. And it will be on the 17th again. So those are the only items that I have to report here. Any questions for me? Thank you.
All right, we'd like to move into committee reports. Mentor Advisory Committee, Katrina.
First of all, I apologize for not getting to this to you sooner. I saw it went by email today and it was not Sandra's fault, it was mine. I'm a little overwhelmed this time. But I do have, there are several things that I wanted to bring to your attention. One is the membership committee report for the year. One is the membership committee report for the year. As you may remember, we tried to put this into a more seamless process so that you only have to approve VAC members once a year, generally speaking, unless they have a vacancy come up mid-year. And this is the time of year that you get to do it. As was requested, we did get some additional information from the VAC members, and I went ahead and asked all of the VAC members to provide the information, not just the ones that need to be voted on tonight. But before we get to, to that part, I wanted to go over a couple common threads on the last VAC meeting on June 18. At some of these things, you have heard many times because there are recurrent concerns that come up at the VAC meeting. The audit requires the budget, and this time, we had good news about 3% sunset, so that was very exciting. Vacancies, the referral process, intake process, the implementation of the SAMP system, and the, the real need for vendors to feel that there's a transparent process and that vendors are being treated in a fair manner. It was a well-attended meeting. Patrick came, and that was lovely. Any questions about my memo? I'd be happy to go into more detail if you had any question.
I would thank to say, I thought it was very good. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. So now on to, I also wanted to mention that we had two long-serving members of the VAC that completed their terms, and they actually had stayed on an extra year for us as part of our transition process to our, our new VAC, and we thank We've Good Cell and Bob Wire for their many years of dedication and belief. Now, on your vendor advisory board members list, it is only the first page that you need to approve and vote on, and that same information is in the membership committee report and recommendations. And I did give you the entire list so you would have it, but the, except for the first page, everyone else is a continuing term. Are there any questions?
I'll move to the point before you. Maybe we're not doing your favor.
Not tired of him yet.
Dennis Madison, Tammy Simpson, and Andrea Erickson.
Phil's in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, any? Thank you. Thank you. You see, Stephen?
You guys know I don't need this, because I got loud voice anyway. But anyway, good evening, everybody. My name is Stephen Miller. I am the liaison for the Consumer Advisory Committee of Inland Regional Center. As we do celebrate and continue to celebrate our 40th year in business, I would like to give gratitude to all of you who support us and our mission as the consumers speak out, learn to self-advocate. We are really working hard and really getting the word out for people to join our Consumer Advisory Committee of Inland Regional Center. But just a couple of things we have changed is that we are now inviting vendors, care providers, and parents to come to the meetings as well. And the reason why we're doing that is because of the long-time history of perpetuation. So we want to, we feel that if vendors are invited, parents are invited, then people will come to the meetings, and they'll learn to self-advocate. And this past three months, we did have a very successful Monte Carlo night on June 1st. We had about 250 consumers and care providers come. We made about, a little over $750 that night. So we did really good. The next day, the CAC got involved with a one-day self-advocacy conference that gets accepted for our clients. Again, well-attended, 150 consumers came. That was a one-day conference for our, our consumers to learn to self-advocate. What does it mean to have a voice? What are the things they want in life? You know, following their dreams. Who can help them? Us, as staff members here. Board members could help us, help the consumers follow their dreams. You know, it's a chance for them to learn how to speak out their choice, their choices of what they want to do in their life. So it was very good. I forgot her first name, but there was a lady who was basically there to actually run the one-day conference. Her name was Ms. Kennedy, she was from the State Council of Demeoral Disability. She is middle-aged, yeah, but you know what? She was, hey, we're all middle-aged, and we're all getting older. Hey, I'm 43, but anyway. Well, that's beside the point. But the thing is, she had a dream to learn, to teach people how to self-advocate. She even got her, got her master's degree. You know, we can all follow our dreams and go back to school, find work, do what we want. So that was a great day, and I was a big part of it, and even helped the clients. Okay, what is it that you want to do? Okay, you figure out what you want to do? Do you have a plan? Take that plan, put it into action. It's one of the many trainings I do for our clients, leadership through personal change. Okay? Think, plan, do. The advocates and myself and the unit, events and training unit, we are doing a lot of outreaches. Just to mention, this past Saturday, the Old Country Fair in Big Bear, well-attended, okay? Ivan Enriquez and some of our staff went up there this weekend. Last month, the Hisperia Resource Fair, I attended, well-attended, about 500 people, We were doing a lot of networking at the day programs, going to the day programs, you know? We're having clients who call me Ivan or Ulysses and ask us questions on what they, how can they go about doing certain things. Healthy bodies, healthy lives. A class is actually starting tomorrow, a three-week course for two hours a night, and they learn how to, about, how to be healthy. IRC orientation. Me and the advocates are teamed up with a training specialist and actually help co-facilitate IRC orientation, like there is going one, one right now, okay? And then, you know, what I really like about the CAC, and really getting the word out, is that we conduct monthly trainings. Last month, I did a training on volunteerism, and actually had a speaker come from United Way on what is volunteerism and how can you help your community? How can you get involved? This week, we have our next CAC, this Thursday night from 5:30 to 7:00. How to be creative and make healthy snacks, okay? Next month, it's gonna be a training on, it's gonna be a training on what's in your community, okay? Like, I'm gonna get, have somebody come from CAP and actually do our presentation on how can CAP help you advocate for what you need in your community, okay? September, we're gonna do a training on voting, okay? Because this is presidential year, presidential election, okay? So every month, we get together, we do actually trainings that are gonna benefit the consumer. We're involved in the siblings group, mothers supporting moms, fathers network, okay? And, you know, so we are really working diligently as a group and really get the word out. Any questions? Thank you, guys.
Mr. Gross, Bob, you're on your way.
Thank you. I've got the June pool fund market values, but what does a board want to know? I don't want to sit here and board you with a bunch of numbers that probably don't mean so much. What's, what's the board wanting here? What's the board want to know that I can inform you?
Already fixed for staff.
We're going through a roadblock right now. I've got a staff as of July 1st of four of us, and there's two of us right now. One, one is working in the wings. Gustav and I are talking to three candidates, and I'm waiting for the fourth one to get
How many people do you have that have Master Trusts?
We've got about 250 trusts. The market was up in, in June over May. Financial markets were fairly rough again lately, and today was not a good day. Spain's starting to implode, the economy's starting to look like, some indications, the economy's slowing down, so keep an eye on it. We don't have a whole lot at market risk, but we've got enough to ensure that there's some, some growth to the, to the pool fund portfolio, so we're not, I think we're pretty well situated. We're in the process of changing investment advisors, and it's about, got one, we got the equities transferred, but we ended up a roadblock with the large bond fund and getting checks and things that'll match, so hopefully get done by the end of July. Who does the trust report to as far as, my grandson has a trust through you. How does he find out how his trust is doing? Because he's in the Master Trust, but his little piece of the pie, how does he find that out? He can call or talk to his trust associate, or on an annual basis, we send out statements to those that are, to the appropriate individuals on the trust. If it's a court-generated trust, it's either an annual or a year of the year or court accounting. There's, there's a couple of different ways. Depends on the contact with the family, what they want to...
Want to have any questions?
I'd like to put something together for the, for the committee, I just, you know, if you could give me some direction as to, you know, what you'd like to hear, numbers, you want the financials, ups, downs, you know, kind of what's going on with the market that we're watching. You know, just please give me some guidance so I can, you know, make it fruitful for you, so you understand it's, it's a complicated process. You know, I think maybe at some point in time, I think you've got a lot of new members on the board that I have not addressed about what the Master Trust is, and maybe at some point in time, maybe we should...
Use the mincer, just something to do.
It's, 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 it's something that's just, just amazing, what the power, what this trust can do, especially these trusts can do with, with public benefits for people that, you know, the, these funds are, are funds that probably this, our beneficiaries never get anything more than what they've got, some of them's a minimal amount, because we, we work, play off against public benefits in SSI and Medi-Cal. You know, we've had some trusts that are small trusts that have been around for years, so it's a very, very powerful instrument for our, our clients out there that have nothing, at least they've got, get a cover TV, winter's breaks or something. You know, got some nice trips to go out, but yeah, I'd like to address the board so we can sit down, so I think it, to understand and appreciate the power of this, which is truly amazing. Okay? When do we want to schedule that training? When do we want to schedule that? I think it's a great idea, because I know nothing about it.
Well, and I'm sure, Bob, I don't think I'm overstating it, it's here, the board members would be, you know, able to attend an occasional Master Trust meeting and see how things operate.
You know, this, it's, you know, it's, it's an amazing committee that, you know, works, works for, works for us. You know, these, these people are, you know, they're all volunteer like you are, but just sometimes the depth, the depth of the discussions and, you know, that we go through and some of the agonizing decisions that get made and trying to pull it out and push things, and, but it's, it's an amazing process. Yeah, we, we meet the second Tuesday of every month, except for July. Generally, a lot of our committee members are on vacation, so we, we get dark in July, and I send out requests or urgent things by email to the, to the committee and get the response back, and then act off those, and then we'll start back generally in August. I think generally, most of the committee's back by then, so...
I think though, if you realize that the Master Trust Committee is a committee of the board.
Right.
It's, it is included in your bylaws as one of, of the active committees. And so you certainly need to be familiar with it and what it's all about, and we could certainly ask Bob to, to do a presentation to you, so you'd be up to date with that.
I'd love to do that.
Let us look, why doesn't the executive committee maybe look at the schedule and see what might work?
At my natural disposal, as always. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Let's do, oh, okay. Susan, go ahead.
Are you sure? Do you have a PowerPoint for me? Okay, I'll put it up. PowerPoint. Ishma, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for including me this evening and your Back on the Agenda. So any opportunity I can have to speak about Another Way is a wonderful one. I think that there has been tremendous changes in the last nine months for Another Way, and while Ishma's putting that up really quickly. Another Way just completed a nine-month capacity-building academy that was funded by the first five of San Bernardino County, which was very comprehensive and worth about $30,000 worth of training to me as the director, as well as to all the committee members. And what it really was, was a sustainability plan that we completed after nine months of very intensive training. Looked at strengths and weaknesses as an organization, what kinds of things we were doing well, what kinds of things that perhaps we needed help with. It actually ended up to be 48 pages long. What I've done for you this evening is actually just put it into two pages, so I'd like to share those with you. If it's not, it's fine. And what happened after the nine months is there were only eight organizations in the county nonprofits that were selected to be part of this capacity-building academy. There were close to 4,700 applicants for it, so I was proud to be selected for this opportunity. And at the end of the nine months, the eight agencies that were selected got an eight-minute pitch to seven foundations to ask for money. So that was actually two weeks ago, and it was the Wellness Foundation, Kaiser Foundation, the Weingart Foundation, all had representatives in a room. We were all kind of coached into a quick presentation, and I'm not giving you the eight-minute pitch, but I'm proud to say at the end of it, whoever won got $10,000, and Another Way was selected, so... This is part of the pitch that I had to do for the $10,000. And you have to remember that many of the organizations and foundations are unfamiliar with both Inland as well as Another Way, so, I don't know who has a clicker. Yes. If she can click away for me. And I'm gonna go really quickly, truthfully, go ahead and just click right through it, because you guys all know what Inland does, and you're our fiscal sponsor, so I always explain that, just click right through it really quickly. And I'm not going through any of that, but I generally did. In regards to Another Way, though, and especially as there are few new board members that aren't familiar with what Another Way is, just gonna click. Truthfully, we started 26 years ago with one counselor, Lena Franklin, who wanted, had a client who needed a pair of glasses, and I say this story because it speaks to why we're still here 26 years later, is that we knew the, as counselors, that families are in crisis, and there was nothing for them. So we started giving money out of our own paychecks, a small grant from Inland Regional Center, and... why we're still here 26 years later, is that we knew the, as counselors, that families are in crisis, and there was nothing for them. So we started giving money out of our own paychecks, a small grant from Inland Regional Center, and Mr. Roy, the director at the time, told us, "As long as you guys can do this, take care of this money, but you do it on your own time, not on agency time, and, you know, do it on lunch breaks, do it on vacation." So that's how we started. We're all volunteer. We were up until three years ago, and then there was no funding from Inland that came to us. We raised all our money for the 26 years independent of Inland, and some of the things that we do pay are rental assistance, we pay utilities, we buy food and clothing for clients, burial service is something we just added, we also do unmet medical and dental services, and we also pay for immigration. We are one of the few agencies in the county who plays for applications for citizenship for both Riverside and San Bernardino County. We're proud of that. And with along the grants that we provide, $500 for clients to get one in crisis, we do two, three, actually, just click one, two, three, signature events. We do a golf tournament, we do a toy drive for about 600 children now, and we do a food drive in the holidays for over 2,500 clients with disabilities in five different areas. So the toy drive, you guys all know, and we can just click all through that. This year, 600 children were selected with multiple agencies that participated, from private foundations to Kaiser to state employees, and then the food drive, that's the $2,000, funded in part and all, almost 2,000 families in the regional center got food, and $1 million worth of food is donated. We had over 228 volunteers this year, that's the gain there, and five distribution sites that we gave food out, so to Victorville, Barstow, Riverside, Palm Desert, and we encourage that, you know, families come out with their children and get some of the food. Trader Joe's donated the bags last year, so that's the food. And then lastly was the golf tournament that we just had last month. We're proud to announce it was another really successful tournament. We were at the PGA West, and... Just go back one. So we don't actually have the final numbers for the golf tournament. We're pretty close to about $90,000, maybe, $85,000?
I think it's close to about $93,000.
$93,000. So we've come a long way from Calamisa Country Club. We're all volunteers, so I'm so proud of everybody that helps with these... None of these things happen, but with a lot of volunteers. And then about, actually, four years ago last month, I became the first paid employee of Another Way, and a new position was me as a director, and naively I thought, anything's easier than doing a golf tournament. If I write a grant, that would be easier. Unbeknownst to me, I'd never written a grant, but so we started writing grants four years ago, which was very different, and with that came some great success. You can click. The first year, we applied, we received close to $100,000 worth of grant funding on our first year. In two years, we applied for 12 different proposals and were funded for nine. It is an extraordinary accomplishment in the nonprofit sector, because it's just... And I say, because everyone asks me, "How did you do this?", and I always say, "It is truly the mission." It isn't, you know, although we had a great grant writer, too, and we do good things, but I think also it speaks to the need of our client and our community. So we've been fortunate to expand the kinds of things that we're able to do with all the different foundations, and go ahead. One of these was a grant that we collaborated with Inland, with First Five Dental. This little girl actually had cancer as well, and she had never taken her daughter, who is not even three yet, and she had to have six extractions. So the grant provides us with things that we normally wouldn't have done. Inland couldn't have done this without that funding, so mom wanted to share how amazing it was that we helped her daughter. And then as well, some of the successes that we recently had was a little boy at the top, you know, insurance didn't cover the helmet, he just had surgery. As you know, the bureaucracy of how we work is Inland wouldn't pay for the helmet, he just had surgery. If it didn't get the helmet, his little head would have stayed deformed. The counselor came begging to Another Way, "Can you pay for this helmet?", and of course, Inland said they needed a denial from the insurance, which rightfully they should, and but the time would have been too late for him, and so we called the vendor with the counselor, and we got it funded. So the mom sent a picture with him with the helmet two weeks later and wanted us to say how grateful she was. Again, it speaks to things that normally somebody else can't do, that now Another Way can. The little boy at the bottom with the van, there are a lot of people in that picture because it required a lot of people to get him home. He was in a car accident, had been sub acute, his family lives in Thermal in a trailer, and he ended up being here for almost four years with his family, coming and being with him, every day driving down a week to see him and just leaving in a van. So we were able to get him... It took us a year, a van, and to get him home for the holidays. So it was a really wonderful moment for all of us at Another Way, and many agencies and a lot of people that made that happen. And the last one was a little girl for In-N-Out Foundation, gave us $25,000 for equipment, and the care provider had said she'd never seen her laugh that hard. She's one of the children that had shaken baby that was at the facility, total care now, so it's nice to be able to share these news stories with you guys. And so what the plan actually means for Another Way, as I jump into that, one of the things that we learned in the nine months, and just click all the way through, is that in order to do the things that we need to stay here for the next 25 years, is that of course we need to have good leadership at the top, but more importantly, that we remember the mission that we started with and the clients. And the CBA Academy allowed us to really have a picture of what that success is going to look and a plan that we're going to need in order for that to happen. So here's the plan. It really comes down to three things that we're looking at, and we also completed a strategic plan that Carol attended in March, so we utilized what we had done in our strategic plan funded by the Weingart Foundation, and then the training that we got at CBA, as well as another grant from Bank of America for another $25,000 to complete this training and transition for Another Way. I think the idea of what happened when we first started 26 years ago with Lena is a very different picture of what we're doing and needing now as we move forward, and some of those things that we recognize that we have to have more clarity and transparency is the fact that we first have to have a better presence in the community as we're growing quickly, and a way to now keep track of all the grant funding, both internally as well as externally for Inland to ensure that we're being good stewards of the funding. And secondly, the strength about our partnership with Inland has always been the in-kind support that Inland has provided to Another Way, and I think that having a formal MOU, or Memo of Understanding between two agencies as we move forward, is something that we really, we've spoken to about it at length. More formalized, a relationship is going to be needed as we keep getting more grants and getting bigger. And lastly, I think that an independent fiscal system for us as we've gotten larger also helps our relationship with Inland and the funders as we move forward. So our hope is, with this new funding, that they have allotted an independent consultant, rather very well-renowned company called Nonprofit Finance Fund, that's been funded $30,000 to do an assessment for Another Way on what best practices would be on our fiscal systems and internal systems, and are hopefully going to be here before the end of the year. Lastly, I think that we've seen a tremendous growth in need. I'm going to go through all the numbers, but the reality is there are more clients now at Regional Center that need more help for basic needs, and those needs and those resources have kind of disappeared. And we also know that there's lots of changes for the state budget, and the kinds of clients that are coming are very different than came almost five years ago. So we have to adapt to the new need in the community, and our hope is that we will still be here for the next 25 years. That's my plan, that's my pitch, for the $10,000.
Pretty good.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Maybe I'm wrong, but I thought I read in the paper that the governor had vetoed the first five. That is, that's true then, right?
That's correct. It was $54 million just for San Bernardino County.
How's that going to affect your organization?
Our contract for First Five just ended on June the 30th, so we did not reapply. Inland did not reapply for that First Five funding. I went to the last commission meeting last month, and their discussion is, is that they're going to be issuing a new RFP in July, at the end of this month, possibly August 1st, and decide how that new fund, all the new money that got back to First Five, the $54 million, is how that's going to be spent.
They got the money?
Yes, they did.
Oh, so it did come back?
Yeah, it did come back. They won their lawsuit.
Sorry, I didn't take everything in. What is the CBA or the CBA I am related to?
It's the Capacity Building Academy of San Bernardino County. First Five, one of the largest funders in the county, awards competitively eight organizations a year. This is the second year, we're considered the CBA Two group. Last year, the first year I applied and I didn't get it, and so the second year I was really happy that we were. It's worth about $40,000 worth of capacity billing that's awarded by First Five to each of these agencies, in the hope that you build good infrastructure in your organization and you provide good services in the county. So they're willing to invest in a small group to ensure that you take good care of their Thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
We do have another committee report that slipped our agenda here, so the performance contract, Paula?
Yes.
There you go.
Dr. Cutler, members of the board, and Ms. Fitzgibbons, and congratulations, Dr. Cutler, and thank you, Ms. Fitzgibbons, for your support of Another Way. It's really tremendous, and without you and the directors and the support that they give, all those things wouldn't happen. Now, on to the performance contract update. You have before you a short little spreadsheet.
If it was something that was handed out this evening and should have been replaced in it, those questions, please? Do you have it?
I think I missed it.
Yes, because you didn't get it.
Thank you.
Give you a minute or two there to look at it?
Why don't you walk us through it?
All right, I'll walk you through it. You'll notice that item number one, what we do here is we measure the performances in our items. We've got five different items. There's a decrease or an increase in the various items. Number one is the percent of regional center caseload in the DCs, so either increase or decrease that, and the idea would be a reduction to reduce that, to move those folks into more home-like settings. You'll notice there, number one, we were able to move 12 consumers out of the DCs and into more home-like settings, which is really a great accomplishment. That was a 17.14% decrease, for those of you who like the percentages. Number two, we increased the percent of minors residing with families in home settings. Home settings, you'll notice there, they include things like a foster agency, a home of a parent and guardian, that kind of thing. We had a 5% increase in that area. We were able to move more out, and you'll see your number there, the count of actual consumers that were able to move. Number three, on the next page, am I going too fast? Okay, yes, Mr. King?
The target is 5% for number two.
Yes, sir.
And midway through the year, we're at 1.56%?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we have some work to do.
Well, yeah, but we're still, you know, still moving along.
Yes.
Right, these are only some of the figures, so...
Yes, they are. Yes, and particularly with that, when the minors residing in family homes, sometimes they're, you know, like the DC people, some of these are a little easier and some are a little bit more challenging.
I have a 16-year-old who'd be happy to give you...
You know I'm done parenting, thank you very much. All right, now I lost my place. Are we on four?
Three.
Okay, I was just testing you. Okay. You'll notice that your number four is increasing the percent of adults that are residing in home-like settings, and there's a little list there to tell you which things those are. The target was a 6% increase, and you'll notice that thus far at this midpoint, we've been able to have a 2.9% increase, and that's a total of 10,100 folks. Number four, we want to decrease the minors living in facilities serving six or more. This one is a little harder, because Southern California has the only facility that serves really, like ventilator-dependent, really serious children, and that's totally kids over here, and so that one is really hard to make progress on, because those folks unfortunately don't move that fast. But we have four additional, so we have at this time four additional children in that sub acute, and so it's come up to 22. Although in the time that I've been doing the performance contract, which has been for several years, that's still a good number. We are holding it steady, and we do decrease it, but we're not overall going up, so it's a good progress point there.
Paula, question?
Sir, yes.
The children that are moving in, have we made four placements into Totally Kids, or were four placements made by the 10 Southern California Regional Centers?
That I don't know, but I can find out for you. Specifically, you're asking me if some of those have come from our San Bernardino Riverside area, or have some come from Northern California?
Yeah.
I can find out, let me...
The fact that we have an unusual resource may mean that we're never going to do well in this particular...
Yes, yes, and that's a reality as far as I know, but I will make an inquiry and I'll get back to you. And five, decrease the number in percent of adults living in facilities serving more than six. You'll notice that in that particular case, our target was less for a 4.94% reduction, and we were very close on this one. We got to a 3.87% reduction, so we were able to move 10 folks out. So this is one of our good performance contract reports, at least from my perspective, and I hope you agree. And I think some of the credit, a lot of the credit, if not all the credit, goes to Carol, the board, and all the CSCs and the folks here that help us do that.
It goes to the staff.
The CSCs are double where they are.
Staff, thank you, ma'am.
But a good job overall, thank you.
Oh, well, thank you very much, Mr. King.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler.
All right, very much, back to the nominating committee?
Back to the nominating committee. There were three people interviewed for board positions. Two of them will be called prior to the August meeting. Dr. Chin, is it Chin? Wants to wait a few months, I guess he's thinking about it. And then, with great thanks and, you know, a lot of sorrow, we did receive a verbal resignation from Gregory Harrison from the board, so it's just a little bit too much for him. Overwhelming obligation, so... Are we going to be sitting here with $19 million?
We can do that on behalf of the board, we'd be glad to do that.
Okay. And in that, there are only two people, as I stated before, now serving on the nominating committee. Anyone? Think about it. That's the board.
All right.
Can I just... In your packet, you should have had a list of the committees as they're formed right now today, and we're making some good progress also in getting community representation in the committees, so if you know people in the community that might be interested in doing a committee versus sitting on the board, this is a good way to get people introduced and educated about what we do and what our responsibilities are, so it might be a good tool for all of us to use. And we're pretty close to finishing also putting together the audit committee. That will be working with our new auditors and working with you all as we go through the audit process. And this is our independent auditor, this is not working with the state audit books.
I'm a community member, so like the business committee and the audit committee? I'm a community member. It's for like the business committee and the audit committee. I can't remember in the bylaws. Does the board have to actually ratify their appointment?
I'll have to double-check. I think usually they just look at the whole committee and ratify the committee itself, but I'll need to check for you. I'm not sure.
You're stuck. Don't get that rough like, maybe I get out of it. You're in there, Jack.
I'm all right.
Don't worry.
Well, I think we've talked about board reapproval quite a bit.
Yes. So that's really all business.
That's all business.
So Carol, those spouses?
Pardon?
Those spouses?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry.
She's good.
Pardon?
Probably giving a divorce.
I would be mad.
Carol, we're particularly looking for people in Riverside County, consumer, people who represent some unrepresented minorities. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's where we really need the three major categories, yes. If any of you have any ideas, just give me a call or email me, and we'll follow up with you. Do some work with the nominating committee to get those people in and interviewed.
And we're having the newspaper ad next week. We did talk about doing an email, because we have a massive email list, just emailing in general?
We can include that in some of our constant comment, constant contact email blocks that we do.
Because of the cost.
Right, that one does the cost.
Yeah, it gets to a lot of people.
Yes.
Are you going to have to do business?
We just need a motion.
For approval for 2012-2013 contract? I think you've all read the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'm not going to make a motion.
More discussion.
I have discussion, but I don't know.
All right, well, let's start there.
I'm a little concerned, okay, and I realize we've been busy, that the contract is where we get our $250 million or whatever it is we get, and there's no summary, or these are the changes, we're going to need new staff, they're going to want us to have our meetings in the rain. There's absolutely nothing. I'm being asked tonight to vote on a quarter of a billion dollars that I know nothing about, and I'm disturbed with that.
One of the things, we got the contract early, well, mid-June, and it was after the meeting. And just right now today, and we had to turn it around within a week. So it has been signed, and you're ratifying the action that was taken, the signature. The contract is identical to what you've worked with last year. There will be new added language when all of the dust settles with the trailer bills to finish the pieces of the contract that really need to be there.
The state made the comment, okay, when we were on the phone call, that they didn't believe that the board was taking an active enough interest in running the organization. Yet the board's being asked to approve a quarter of a billion dollars with nothing, not even a one-page, it's the common, because I wasn't here last year when we did this. Jack wasn't here, Christina wasn't here, Mary Beth wasn't here. It doesn't say this contract does this. It's not going to require new staff. Oh, by the way, section seven, though, says we have to hire a whole department. It is nothing. I'm not being critical. I'm just saying that I'm being asked to vote on something, and then the state has the audacity to tell me in a phone call, you know, we had a meeting, we're not taking enough action, but oh, by the way, here, sign this, be sheet.
And we'll have some changes after you sign.
Right, I don't, I'm sorry.
Well, Patrick, you are making a very good point, and you're also bringing to my attention that you all need more clarity about what the contract is all about, what it says, and that is one of the main trainings that is coming down the pipe for you. But that doesn't mean that you shouldn't have that basic information today.
So what happens if we don't ratify it? What if we say, no, we don't have enough information, we're not going to make a decision. We want in the minutes, we want the state to see that, no, we want to have information, and we're not going to ratify the contract until we get it. I'm just asking hypothetically.
I think they could pull the money out of the bank.
Yeah, we get the money from the state, so...
Point of order. I move that we ratify and sign the contract, because we really shouldn't be having a discussion until we have a motion on the board. So I so moved.
Second.
I've already had my statement.
I know, but I don't want to interrupt you because I have this trainee thought going.
My wife does. You can't.
I don't think my husband's going to want to hear that. You know, I don't... Have you seen that on other boards that are funded from the state and federal, it's quite common to have a board almost make a signature, because we have given staff, you know, this is why she's working here. She already knows what's in it. She's gone over it. I'm hoping that, I mean, we were already way ahead, turning in all our paperwork. Isn't that what we were told, that we had our end of the year done in time? I'm hoping that staff is equipped to make that first decision, if it's that necessary. So I'm willing to sign it, and then then later we can veto or whatever. You can later. When they bring it to, you don't like it, or can resent, we have that right. But to get this a motion, we need to give them that forward. They already took the money. You want to see that money come out of your account? Because it can. So that's one thing.
The state of California is a wonderful organization, but it's not perfect, in my experience. There have been years where we have run here through August with no contract at all. I have seen some amazing things in those periods. I won't bore you all with. And so we have this imperfect situation that we're in. We're being asked to affirm a contract which the state will then write. That's imperfect. But we have a motion, and we have a second, and we have a problem, which we have a different view on, or we might have a couple of different views on.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify what I think we're voting on here. Basically, we're accepting money from the state to provide services for the people in two counties with disabilities under certain conditions, which are probably not going to vary too much from what we're used to doing.
That's correct. It's not going to vary a great deal, but I think that one of the things that's been brought up is new members get an orientation manual, and the contract is included in that manual. But again, I think to really understand a contract, you need to have some discussion about it. We need to work through and help you understand what all the provisions are in that contract, because there is a lot to it. Although it looks slim, there's a lot there.
Peter's intelligent concern has validity in our respect his opinion. My pragmatic, cynical acceptance of how things work with the state has a certain validity as well. Different approach.
Please don't take this the wrong way. It's no reflection on the staff. I mean, I understand the situation. I guess what I'm saying, though, is as a board member, it would have been nice, in the luxury of sitting there watching my television the other night, if I could have at least written, oh, okay, it's basically the same contract we've had. It provides this kind of money. We're not going to be adding any new staff. We don't have to put any new departments in. You know, we don't have to lay people off, you know, and it's going to give us this kind of money, and hey, there's a trailer bill, and there's going to be other changes.
I agree. I would have liked some information. I'm very used to having financial reports monthly and something like this. I would really appreciate even just a little clarification, because it is hard. We're coming up here wanting a vote. I did read the packet that you gave us. I vaguely remember what the last year's contract said. I will read it again once more. But I really would have liked maybe a little bit.
Well, I mean, you're providing really good feedback, and I appreciate that. And as we move forward, we will do a better job of giving you some brief statements about what is being put in front of you.
Well, I still thought we should vote. I call for the question, which means I'm requesting that you reread my motion and then get the vote. My motion was to sign and accept.
So we have a motion to sign and accept. I'm sorry, is there a second?
Yes.
I said that.
Or key, or we accept.
Oh, good.
All right, we have the motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Oh, it's nay. Sorry, nay.
We understood the intent. Are you speaking to the...
Yeah, just real short, so people understand. Originally, Carol, Gus, and I had talked about trying, and I hate the word because it's overused in the news anymore, but being more transparent on our financial statements. We have some items that, over the years, have been lumped together to the tune of $66 million. That seems like a lot of lumping. So we had agreed that, you know, we're going to see about trying to change that. Gus has come up with a way that we need to do that, we can do that without having to go to the state. So I'm going to withdraw the item, because I don't need to send a letter, but it's the treasurer who is going to approach the state and ask them if we could get some direction, some assistance, some help, in how their computer program runs, is what we use. Gus was nice enough, though, to find a way to do that, so because I had to meet an agenda deadline, we had to put it on the agenda, so we're doing it. But, and correct me, Gus is still here, isn't he? Ah, there we are, way in the back. Correct me if I'm wrong, but starting on the next financial report we start getting, there will be subcategories on a number of items, so we have a better idea of what that money's going for, rather than just like general expense, or miscellaneous expense, or whatever they call it. We're going to break it down to, what is it, the top five, or the top 10 to five, depending on the dollar amount.
Yeah, basically what will happen is we're sending out, what Patrick is talking about is the state has a prescribed set of general ledger accounts that they use for the entire system throughout California, and we cannot modify that structure. However, we could add suffixes to the accounts to break down, say, transportation. We could have five types of transportation, general expenses. We could have five types of general expenses. But the basic structure of the general ledger accounts, they control, because they want to maintain uniformity throughout the whole system. So for our internal consumption, we could provide some of the detail that Patrick wants, to some extent. But we are implementing some of those changes to our bookkeeping structure, and it will appear on the first set of financials for the new fiscal year, which will be the report that we make in August, for July. Right now, as I mentioned before, we're barely completing the June set of financials. We're much less beginning to forecast what the new amount of the budget is for the new year. We haven't even gotten there. Right now, we just crossed the bridge to make sure that we have an advance from the state of California to, you know, $66 million, no, $60 million towards the new contract. It is strictly an advance. And then those are the monies that will tie us, that will tie us up for the first two or three months, until we formalize internally the formal budget, how we're going to break out those expenditures. So right now, our concern in finance is to do the year-end financial statements, the ones that we will present at the very next meeting. At the very next meeting, I will present the June 30, 2012 final budget allocation, which will close 2012. Then the following one, which will be in August, will be for July of the new fiscal year. Then we will have coordinated the details of the new budget, including the line items that Patrick is talking about. So that's where we are on the budget process. The budget, the paperwork that you're mentioning, Patrick, that you wanted to have more detailed, we're not there yet.
Oh, no, I know. That's what I meant. It won't be until...
Until August.
Right. So anyway, the budget will have more detail.
The only other issue we could, that you could ratify is the actual fact that the state gave us a new contract. We have no detail for that.
Anyway, that's what the item is on the agenda for, so we don't need the item anymore.
All right, and we have already discussed the committees briefly. So with that, we thank you all, and the public portion of this meeting is adjourned. We will go into vibrant recess, and convene for executive session.
How are you doing?
Oh, I've never been on YouTube.
Hi.
I wanted to talk to you about this. I work with her. She told me to come and say hi to you. She was hoping to come and join us today.
She's just a good...
She told me, okay, I told you, you know, that I work with her, and she told me to come and join us.
Yeah, me too. I am part of the Riverside three.
That is nice. That is nice. So, yes, so I just wanted to say hi.
Hello.
Hi, well, I'm glad to be here.
Would you mind?
I'll be right back.
Oh. Sorry.
Yeah, you can have my stamp.
See what happens.
I wanted to put a kid for today, so we have a couple.
Right, yes.
They should have let us complete.
Cool. All right.
Research.
Oh.
I don't know.
Thank you very much.
They released a little bit of that package, I'm afraid.
You know, we're convening, Patrick. We're convening. Back on the record.
Oh, I see. But they're not saying.
And then, having done this before, okay, normally, when a government agency comes back, they either say, well, we decided to do A, B, and C, or no directions being given to staff at this time.
Right. That would be inappropriate to see.
Well, I'd like to move.
And I'll even vote for it.
But they're not saying anything.
And then, having done this before, okay, normally, when a government agency comes back, they either say, well, we've decided to do A, B, and C, or no directions being given to staff at this time.
Right. That would be inappropriate to see.
Well, I'd like to move the.
But you're trying to make.
And I'll even vote for it.
Anyone opposed?
You just take this one away from the thing I straw pulled.
I think initially you should indicate that you met him in closed session, and that no action was taken.
Yeah, no action was taken in closed session. We're back on the record, and I believe we're done for the evening. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you all.